Well, good morning, everyone. It's great to have you here with the Polk County Government. It's always better to do that together. Want to recognize Representative Gullett and Sheriff Gullett, and then Judge David Lawes, elected officials who are here. And again, just glad to have everyone. Brian, will you bring forward the people wishing to speak?
I'm sorry.
You got any devices that are still turned on? Good time to suss them. We're very pleased, wanted to have Ms. Deborah Oakley, the Director of Outreach and InReach at the Oasis Family Life Church, who's been a big certification and lead us in the state of Drable.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you in the name of Jesus. Father, we thank you for calling us together at such a time as this. God, we thank you that you've entrusted these board members to make decisions concerning this town and concerning the people, the families that live here. So, Father, we ask that you would give them wisdom, open up their understanding, give them an ear to hear what your Spirit has to say. God, that they would make decisions that would be based on integrity, honesty, God, and in everything honor. We pray that you would give us a heart after you, that your people would be blessed, and that Polk County would be a light, not only in this community, but in the state of Georgia and across the USA, because we put you first. Father, these are the things that we ask, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. We may do the pledge. Our pledge is...
...to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deborah, we are so grateful for Oasis Church being in this county and leadership that you and Pastor Murray bring to the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
The June 11th, 2019 work session minutes and the June 11th, 2019 board meeting minutes are available for review. The June 6th of 2019 state and county meeting minutes are also available for your review. Under Positively Polk this morning, we have a clip from the Larry C. Ragdon White Oak Park Trail and the paving project that was done there. Perhaps Baker Street or County Administrator would want to elaborate more before or after?
After we find this okay.
My name is George Jones. I'm the Director of Transportation for Polk County. Today, I'd like to discuss the White Oak Park paving project that just recently, the paving of White Oak Park, which was approximately 1.5 miles of asphalt surface on the existing graded aggregate base. We hope this paving surface will provide a smooth, comfortable surface for joggers, pedestrians, anybody wanting to use the trail. It'll provide less maintenance, also be more aesthetically pleasing. We finish this up with our internal road crews. They spent a good month out there covering the surface, which actually took longer than the actual paving of the project itself. We hope everybody enjoys this and it's use after the three years to come.
Mr. Chairman, we were very pleased, another episode of team polling, several departments pulling together to get this job done. There's a couple of good things about this project. One is the cost saves. I know, George, you kind of alluded to that in the video, but we're saving about $5,000 to $7,000 dollars a year on average, because we're having to replace all the buildings very frequently. And so, there was a lot of maintenance that was going on with that. And then, really, the second thing is, and you saw a picture of somebody pushing a stroller. So, with the older path that we had, it was just about impossible to push a stroller or wagon, or pull a wagon. And so, it's opened up a whole opportunity for some people to get out there on that trail that you probably couldn't before if they had children or in a stroller situation. So, we're very pleased. Another great team polling project. Thank you.
Thank you. Been out there with my wife and her. All right. I'm going to ask Mr. Taker if she would make a nice announcement here about something that's coming up. Catch off guard.
Yeah. I have a town hall meeting tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 at our own Polk County Airport. I would love for everybody to be there. We're going to talk about the budget and probably a lot of things, but the meeting is mainly on the budget. So, I hope you all can come.
Thank you. Now, we've got some public hearings coming up also related to the budget. The Polk County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing for the tax increase on July 23rd at 9:00 a.m., same day, July 23rd at 6:00 p.m., and then on August 13th at 9:00 a.m., which is also a board commissioners' first meeting in a month. These public hearings must be separate from the regular work sessions or the meetings of the board. So, there'll be an additional budget hearing during the work session on July 23rd at 10:00 a.m. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Detective Amanda Carter, Polk County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Gullett is going to give us a little more information on Amanda.
Yes, Colonel. Could you skip us for a few minutes? Work can seem busy sometimes, and they're on their way here now.
Whatever you need us to do, sorry. We'll come back to that. The Board of Commissioners would like to recognize the Polk County Water Systems Staff for receiving the Gold Award from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals for compliance during 2018. And we're proud to have Ms. Thomas here with us and her all the way up from Roseboro. Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir. Glad to be here. My name's Mike Thomas. I'm with the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. A year ago, actually, retired from managing the Clayton County Water Authority. So, when I was with them, we always went after these awards. But GAWP has 4,000 water professionals as members. We provide training, networking, advocacy for that group. But we also recognize the great work that they do. And so, one of those awards is what we call our Gold Compliance Award, and that means that your facility has complied with all their permit limits and requirements over the last year. Now, you might think, well, that's what they're supposed to do, right? That's their job, and that's correct. But what you don't understand is how much that involves. They do, from my understanding, they do over 16,000 lab tests a year. There are simple things like monitoring and reporting that they can get things for. So, it takes a lot of work, a lot of care for these guys to achieve that, and they've achieved it for all five of your wastewater facilities. So, it takes a lot of work to do that, and I'm proud of them for doing that. The water system is a big part of public health in America. You know, we don't realize how convenient our water is, how great our public health is, a big part because of what these guys do to put the water back in a clean and a sound condition. So, I want to recognize all five of your facilities, the Copper Mine Water Reclamation Facility and Land Application System, the Pumpkin Vine Water Reclamation Facility and Land Application System, and the Upper Sweetwater Water Reclamation Facility. Russell Kelly is here. He's the Wastewater Division Manager. John Pavel is the Lead Operator at Copper Mine. We've got Mark Fowler, who's the Lead Operator at Pumpkin Vine. Greg Parrow, who's the Lead Operator at Upper Sweetwater, and some folks who run all those lab tests, Tim Pugh and Eric Everly. These folks are making sure your water system is run with excellence. And I know I used to really appreciate this as a manager, because they have to apply for it, and once they get it, they don't ever want to lose it. Because once they get it, after five years of compliance, we give them a Platinum Award. So, it creates a lot of pride, and you can be comfortable there doing what they need to do. So, we congratulate these guys.
And we are so grateful to have employees like this here who just recognized, covered the void here in Polk County. Laura, do you want to add something? Good. Good.
I'm good.
Had no invited guests this morning under bid awards award the purchase of a 2020 fire pumper apparatus for Southern Emergency Products in the amount of $298,000. Let me start again on that price. $298,936. And Ms. Tabitha Pollard is going to explain that to us.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is a pumper apparatus that will serve the new fire station. So, and it takes about 306 days to build, and so, the fire department felt like they could get it started so that it would be ready about the time that the fire station is in place. We, on June 7th, we received four bids. The lowest bid was not completely, did not meet specifications, so we're with second bid, and that's in the amount of $298,936. And if we have paid for it before arrival, then we can do that at about $300,000 from the price. We wanted to do that in this as a small purchase. Unless you have any questions.
Get it back up to the chair a little bit, so thank you very much. Sheriff Gullett, if you want to come forward now and can give us appreciation award, and we'll also give you a report.
I didn't want you to have a hearing here, don't mind. I did a sheriff's office report for January 2nd, 2019. As I always wish State District to be busy, during this timeframe, the total residents 1,574. We issued 1,100 feet for traffic citations. Counting 26,050 complaints, high volume dollars of 2,100 alarms, 1,160 vehicles, 756 lockouts. We served 2,712 citizens and civil papers. Counting 2,321 species, instances, persons, and vehicles. 1,037 theft by thieves and burglaries. Internals continues to be a major problem throughout the state. There's only a neighborhood that's not probably no locks to get any cars. There's anything in there, they take them, chains, sunglasses, guns, computers. It's amazing, people leave their bill phones if they're probably looking for their cars. So, if you have a vehicle, put it in the garage, it was built far, or at least lock your car door so that we don't imagine that it's not locked. We've done 3,750 truck stops, arrested 20 DUIs. We cleared 1,154 warrants. We've got the 365 zone patrols, and we had 618 humanities to report. Our safety, one of those was sacked over the day, and 228 was charged. These sheriffs always pay State District to be busy during this timeframe. We've got 1611 inmates. The average population of the deal was 228. If she gets here, I'll let you know about the rest of the I-50s for that.
No problem at all.
Thank you, Governor.
Thank you. We have no one signed up for participation in those agenda items, so we'll move right into the whole business. Let me go back to consented items and take care of that. Two consented items. Number one is to appoint Ernie Moore, who's in our audience today, to the Polk County Board of Elections with a term beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2023. Number two is to appoint Katie Anderson to the Polk County Library Board for a three-year term. The term will be running from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2022. So, just to ask if any of the post-commissions would like to maybe those consented items to the regular business.
One question I have is my copy attendant has a third item.
Well, I don't have that on my copy, so...
Did I read it? Did anyone read it? Or are they going to pass it down?
Okay. Number three is to appoint Mayor Boyd Austin to the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Plating District as a representative for Polk County with a term beginning July 19, 2019, and ending June 30, 2022. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. So, now, I would ask you if any of these three consented items need to be brought forward to the regular business. Hearing none, we'll leave them as consented items and launch into the old business here. Number one is to discuss action to approve the request by Airport Director Terry Tibbetts to approve funding in the amount not to exceed $500,000 for the conversion of a large airport hangar known as Hangar One, currently designated as a Group Two hangar. This conversion to a Group Three hangar would provide that the structure is in full compliance with all the current building and fire code requirements. This was tabled from the May 14th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting, and Mr. Green is going to report. And we also have Airport Director Mr. Terry Tibbetts for consented items.
Thank you. I'd like to give you a report on the hangar conversion project that was tabled and tell you about the things that we've looked at to try to help you in making a decision on this project. We looked at primarily four things. We looked at the design. We looked at procurement method. We looked at contractor interest in bidding on projects of this type. And we looked at the overall cost as far as what we think is justified for this project based on various types of procurement. Going back to design, we don't have the detail, of course, that Mr. Tibbetts has been involved with in this for quite some time developing this project. But we did want to go back through the design and see if there was any way to value engineering the project, come up with any savings in the design itself other than the pricing. We've been through it A to Z, answered questions to some of the commissioners that have asked about, and talked to many contractors, also talked to other engineers as far as the type of wall system and all that. Really have not found anything that we can do different and save money in that area as far as the design itself. So, at that point, we looked at the cost and procurement. The procurement method that was available to the airport authority readily was a quick, convenient method. It's the state procurement pricing that is available to any local government, and it's a good method. It's hands-off. It produces a list of highly qualified contractors that can bid on the work and work quickly. So, really, no issues with that, but it is what it is. It's a method. It's not necessarily the most competitive price, but it's very friendly and convenient to work with. As opposed to what the county does, we have a good bit of staff resources. We're able to put out a contract. We're able to answer a lot of questions, get into contract bidding process out on the Internet. We put that on the Department of Administrative Services website as well for anything over $100,000. We have bonding requirements, and we have other processes here to ensure that we get good quality work through an open bid process. And generally, what that is designed to do is to generate competition and ensure that we have the best price. We often get prices we don't like, but when we receive several bid prices, we know that it's competitive, particularly if we have bids that are close together. And as you've seen in the past, we sometimes give one or two bids, and they're far apart, and it makes you wonder if they're really interested in the project or not. So, in looking at an open bid process, we want to make sure that there would be adequate contractor interest in this project. So, if we did put it on the street, we just wouldn't give them a bid back that we didn't like. So, we have talked to a number of contractors in the industry that have worked on hangers and done similar work with firewalls, which is a major component of this conversion, this construction of large firewall. And our initial responses back were, please, put it out. We would love to bid on it. So, I feel like if we do put this out for bid, we will have many parties looking at it. Comes down to it, I'm not sure how many will actually bid. I can't promise that. But there is a good deal of interest in contracting this work with the county as well as good contractors, contractors that we know that have done similar work, so we're comfortable that we would have folks that are very qualified if we were to bid it out. We have also looked at cost. The initial pricing available to the authority with the state pricing was $496,000, which is why we had a request for $500,000 from Mr. Tibbetts on this project. If we are able to procure this through our in-house staff using finance and engineering services, we're going to save $30,000 right there. But we are putting those resources on the county staff, and it's something we would have to absorb. Talk to finance, I've talked to Bruce Coyle, our county engineer, who would primarily be the one that would do some heavy lifting on this as far as managing if we were to support the airport in this effort, and they indicated they could support it. So, it is a staffing issue, but it is something we could handle. Also, through competition, we think we can save another $50,000 to $80,000 seeking additional bids. So, overall, we're looking at probably over 20% savings if we were to put this out again for bid. It does cost you time. The results are not guaranteed, but with the potential for 20% savings, which is probably more than $100,000, it's probably something we would recommend you consider doing if we're going to participate in this project. If this was approved to be handled as a county project, like other county projects, we would have to manage it. We would have to take the better part of July and put it down for bids, answering questions, and then bring you back a recommendable award if we had satisfactory bids, probably as soon as the first meeting, on the outside of the second meeting. So, that basically would be the safer, the general savings we would expect. I did not look really at the return on investment. That's something else we probably want to look at, and be glad to do that, work with Terry and the tax assessor. But basically, the idea is if you modify the hangar and build it a little differently than it was originally designed, you would have a much better tax base located in this hangar to enjoy your economic development potential for this project. That would include maybe as much as $20 or $30 million more dollars worth of taxable assets that are housed on the airport. And we can do math on that based on occupancy and the type of chips and things that would be stored in the hangar and ready back to them from that. Basically, it would be, there would be a payback period that we can come up with to further advise you on preventing this of the project. And we do that while we're bidding it out. If you approve, I'll be glad to help move this along and answer any other questions you have.
I think it's a great report. Scott, thorough and complete, a lot of different angles. There's been a tremendous amount of work going into this evaluation. Terry Tibbetts has put huge amounts of time in trying to make sure we included everything with collaboration with the fire department, the chief of health, and his staff, and also Scott has spent a lot of time on it. So, we're trying to move cautiously and slowly, carefully, and we're going to try to save money here. Any comments or questions?
I just want to say thank you to Scott, Brian, Chuck, all of us. We've worked very hard to come up with an answer. We're still working at it, and Terry, please just be patient with us. I know you're on our team.
Yeah, I do want to mention that, you know, I'm speaking to you on what I'm reporting, but you know, it is very much another team polling effort. Joey Pelfrey and his staff have worked very closely answering questions on this and vetting a lot of these things that have come up. Terry has been back and forth with us, as well as some of the contracting industry. Bruce Coyle, Steve Turner, Steve Wages, all that staff has worked together to support this project. Everybody's been extremely helpful in getting us to this point. So, I do want to mention it is a team effort, and appreciate those times we've sent. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, the long wait for recognition of the Public Safety Appreciation Award, which Sheriff Gullett presented.
Thank you all for allowing me to mess up the schedule a little bit. We had everybody here in anticipation for your... Amanda, why don't you please go up front, please? She's going to be late. Amanda's very quiet and stays behind the scenes, so this is going to be strange for her to be standing out front. A lot of you said Amanda is our Public Safety Award appreciation. Amanda started her career with Sheriff's Office in Polk County in 2006 as a dispatcher. She worked with the League Communications Office and then transferred over to Sheriff's Office to get work at a state investigation back in 2008. After a short time there, she applied for the State of Tennessee Mandate School in order to train a couple of peace officer. She served in the Public Safety and Emergency Technology Division since 2016, when she applied for was assigned as a crime scene investigation unit of the Criminal Investigation Division, where she presently serves. Amanda's a teacher in detail, a dedicated job, even with very demanding on-call schedule. This is another one of those people that's on a very short leash, and every time a phone rings, our birthday party's over, Christmas is over, whatever's going on is over. She is so be able to come to work. It's such a report, she's able to do work, and she does so very frequently with limited supervision without difficulty. She also continually stressed and proved her abilities to continue and advance training. Amanda's very competent in her role as a crime scene technician and is available asset of Sheriff's Office. All the people that likes to watch TV and see CSI, she's our CSI. Of course, she's not near as good as they are. She can't get on this, doesn't even like 30 minutes. But she does the paint tape, you know? She's a self-starter. You don't have to watch what she's doing. She's a hard charger. She gets the job done, and I'm proud of her for being recommended for this. She works quietly behind the scenes. She's kind of like a mouse. She's just always doing it, don't play a lot of racket, but she does this a good job, and she helps to make Polk County a better place for us and our citizens to live. And this letter was sent in by our captain, Robert Davis. If I can call her supervisor, everybody, can y'all join her, please?
If all of y'all are kind of boring, I'm going to ask Mr. Warren, who's out of Public Safety himself, to read the appreciation certificates.
Now, when you talk about public safety, man, it's a column, and these guys, they do this, lay it out on the line. But I was able to experience, I mean, I was so thankful when they showed up when I called them. And granted, I hope you never have to have these services, but when you do, it is so good that people, you know, they lay their lives aside to go down a path that I believe is truly a column. This award is presented to Amanda Carter in recognition of outstanding service to her community, presented by the Polk County Board of Commissioners this 25th day of June 2019.
Also, David, you go out, I want to kind of thank Texas Roadhouse, too. They sent us a coupon for a dinner, but it's too, Texas Roadhouse. If you don't have a date, Amanda, I'm always looking.
My name's going to get me up there. I was going to tell you to take that. My favorite time of these meetings, Public Safety Appreciation Awards. Under new business, discuss action to approve the advance release of the January 1st, 2020 payment of $137,500 to the Polk County Airport Authority. The system with the financial obligations requiring the FAA grant assurances. Mr. Baker and Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tibbetts had submitted a request to my office a couple weeks ago for an advance payment. This would be consistent with the current IGA that's in place, and this would be the January 1st payment of $137,500. Mr. Tibbetts is in the audience. Is the board vice director?
I don't think this comes as any surprise. We've been talking about this for several months. With the termination of the commercialization of the airport, which occurred on December 3rd of 2018, that changed the financial model under which the intergovernmental agreement was based. And we are, of course, doing the best that we can to manage the airport within the assets and the funding that we have available to us. But the reality is that as we make the... But the reality is that as we make the transition away from commercialization, as we continue to deal with all the lawsuits that resulted out of that, there continue to be expenses that both Paulding County Airport Authority and the Paulding County Board of Commissioners as cosponsors are jointly responsible for under the terms of grant assurances. So we are in the process of determining what the way ahead is going to be, which we trust will result in a more predictable and stable financial model moving forward. But for the time being, we've still got to pay the power bills, the lawyer salaries, everything that goes along with having the airport out there. So we are requesting that you go ahead and release the January payment now so that we can stay current on all of our obligations, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have out there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Under new business number two, let's discuss action to approve the request from the Paulding County Superior Court Judges to authorize the chairman on behalf of the board of commissioners to accept the grant awarded to the mental health court and execute all necessary documents. It's a pleasure to have you today. Go out with us. I'll elaborate on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start off by thanking you, Mr. Chairman, as well as the board of commissioners and county administrator for the tremendous support that you have given to the Superior Courts and to this program, and also to thank this tab of the poller and the entire finance department for their hard work and flexibility in working with us. I come before you today to update you on the status of the recently implemented mental health court and also to discuss with you a grant recently awarded to Paulding County. I stood before you a year ago asking you to approve the grant that we have been awarded that you did and we are very thankful for. During the past twelve months, we have fully staffed the mental health court program. I have a number of those individuals here. I'm May, our current coordinator. This is Lauren Ortiz, my prosecutor for District Attorney's Office, Mr. Mike Dischusi, and the public defender's office, Ms. Sarah Powers. Also in support, we have our appointed public defender, Ms. Angela O'Connor. It's Allison Bryant, who is our courthouse administrator. And in the back, it's Shel Palmer, Deputy Shel Palmer, who is our surveillance officer. And they are a part of the team along with our treatment providers. We also have a probation officer involved, and then of course, I am involved with it as well. We have drafted a protocol set out. We have a participants manual, which we have drafted and continue to update, as well as a sanctions matrix. We have screened and started accepting participants and started working with those and in short, gotten down to the business of getting, helping those individuals with their lives and getting them back on track. Our official kickoff was on March eighth of two thousand nineteen. We currently have four participants in the program. Two of them are in phase one and two are in phase two. Each of them came to us with a dual diagnosis involving mental health issues as well as substance abuse. We have one who transferred in from the drug court program because of overriding mental health concerns. Two of them are dealing with methamphetamine, and one is struggling with alcohol and one with cocaine, or they were when they came into this program. The fourth one came in at the very end of May, so we've been working with that person for a little bit shorter time. But I am happy to report that all four of our participants are currently working. They are all employed. Three of the four have driver's license. Three of the four are consistent at this point with their medication as well as tested clean on the drug testing. They are mending relationships they have with their family, with their friends, learning how to cope and be productive, and breaking the cycle of incarceration, which to us is very important as well. This is a program about doing that, and we are so far have been very successful with the participants that we have been here. We hope to grow and expand over the next twelve months, and I hope to come back with an even bigger report for you a year from now. The Accountability Court Judges Funding Committee has recently awarded Paulding County's Mental Health Court a grant in the amount of one hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars for program operations during fiscal year two thousand twenty. This grant has a required match from the county of thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. We are requesting this required county match to be paid through the day funds to provide for substance abuse counseling, drug testing supplies, contract services, and other services dealing with the drug addiction and substance abuse component that we deal with. All of our participants have a dual diagnosis of both of mental health as well as substance abuse through self-medication or otherwise. And that is to address these substance abuse issues through those. On behalf of the judges of the Superior Court of Paulding County, we would like to recommend that on behalf of Paulding County, that Mr. Chairman you and the board of commissioners accept this grant and that the chairman be authorized to execute all necessary documents in order to view so. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer this, please.
That's a great report. Really appreciate you being here today. The cycle of incarceration, maybe a deputy would be more able to talk about the reduction of return business of certain people, or maybe you want to allow, I'd like to hear speak to that a little bit more. That was a big saving.
It does create a huge savings. What we were finding is that on average, when people come into the criminal justices from the sheriff's office responds to calls, we are taking man-hours from the sheriff. We are taking, it's costing us money in transportation to respond to these calls, and on most occasions, there are no resources available other than to incarcerate those people. We don't have enough mental health facilities in the state of Georgia. It has been an issue for quite some time. When they come in, and once they come into District Attorney's Office and into the court system, I as a judge don't have a lot of options on what I can do with these people. And so it becomes a revolving door. We bring them in, we incarcerate them, we try to medicate them while we're here. We're paying for their medication through our tax dollars in order to medicate them while we've got them in jail. It takes man-hours in order to transport them to get treatment sometimes, to take them to a facility if one is available. And all of these things are costing us money to do so, and at the end of the day, we get them, we might get them stabilized before they bond out, but once they bond out, there is no follow-up on that. And a lot of that is what we are trying to address, not only incarceration on the front end, but also the follow-up. They are going through, on a weekly basis, they attend a number of sessions through our treatment provider dealing with life skills, how to cope, how to deal with their particular mental illnesses and mental illness addition, mental health issues. Each of our participants has an individualized program that has been created for them, so we are not treating them en masse, so to speak. Each one of them has an individualized component. They do meet in group sessions on a weekly basis, on a daily basis, with counselors from their treatment provider, but there are also a number of one-on-one sessions that they are involved in, so that we're trying to treat each of them individually as well.
Any other questions, comments? He did a great report and adds a lot of our understanding that hold overall.
I'm May, Mr. Chairman. I have some mental health requirements to attend. Anything else that I could offer?
Thanks so much for being here with the rest of your team.
Thank you for your time and thank you for all that you give for us. We appreciate it.
New business number three is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter professional services agreement with Atkins North America Incorporated for construction, engineering, and inspection at a rate of ninety-two dollars per hour, not exceeding two hundred eighty-seven thousand and twenty dollars. Mr. Jones.
Morning. The DOT, you know, continuing to experience a steady workload with multiple projects under construction. We actually have a bunch of projects right now under various stages of preliminary engineering, so that workload is continued to look, expand in the future. We currently have a vacant instructor, construction inspector position open and actually found out this morning, somebody else put their notice in, so we have two now. We're probably going to have an issue filling these positions with folks with available qualifications and experience needed. We currently utilize a CEI construction, engineering, and inspection consultant from Atkins to supplement our county staffing, the contract with Atkins is set in the next five years. We recommend entering a new contract with Atkins to provide us with the employee to give us the experience we need to handle our projects. We have a roundabout project at the intersection of Ridge Road, Corn Store Road, and Bob Hunt Road that will have a bid open on July twelfth, and we're proposing to use this Atkins CEI consultant on that project and some other projects. And based on the qualifications and services, Atkins will pay at the all inclusive rate of ninety-two dollars an hour. We solicited some other price quotes, and those quotes are in the range of a hundred five to a hundred and ten dollars an hour. This agreement, if approved, will be funded through the sponsor. Any questions? You covered it all, I guess. What was that over there? It was, I believe, seventy-nine dollars an hour. I'm sorry, it was eighty-five dollars an hour.
New business number four is discuss action to enter into multi-year subscription agreements with InSource Solutions for Wonderware Software for the Richland Creek Reservoir and Water Treatment Plant for a amount totaling a hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and two cents. And it's in Kelly here. Is Julie here? Have you got Brad in the back?
No, Kelly isn't here this morning. Just got made this morning. The, we have a, well, we didn't have Mark. Mark is back here with Brad and Hubble. This is an expenditure for software that is, provides for the network of our control systems, the data acquisition from all those control systems that operate our Richland Creek Water Treatment Plant. We currently use Wonderware software at our wastewater facilities, and when we were in the process of developing our SCADA master plan, was decided that Wonderware, to continue use of the Wonderware platform system-wide. We have, this is a purchase that we have pushed to the, to the end because we didn't want to enter into a multi-year agreement for when we were not actually using that software. And so at this point, we have, we go from a developer license on the software as the system is being worked up at the instrumentation and control supplier to now needing our own license as that equipment is moved on to our plant property. We've brought you a, InSource is the, is the regional vendor for Wonderware software. They are sole source on this. It is a five-year agreement, years one and two totaling fifty, fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight for the two years, and then the remaining three years are approximately thirty thousand dollars each for a total of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and two cents. Do we have any answering questions?
Another piece of excellent backup material that you gave us of your money. You're good.
Keeps giving that excuse, doesn't he?
That's the conclusion of our regular business. I don't want to, I guess it's not. Obviously, I have yesterday's edition. New business number five is discuss action to adopt ordinance nineteen dash zero three, amending chapter eighteen, Buildings and Building Regulations, Section one eight zero seven zero Alpha.
Yeah.
All right, we finished with number four then. And that is the conclusion of our regular business. I don't want to put any state representative on the spot, but I have appreciated so much you're working with Representative Joseph Gullett, and he has been instrumental in the DA should make it school, and I don't believe county government can function effectively without that interrelationship with our state delegates. And our two new representatives, Representative Montana and Gullett, have been outstanding. But if you want to say something to Joseph, you certainly have the microphone.
No, I'm good. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with you guys and hopefully we'll continue.
Thanks for being here today. We have no one who's signed up for public participation on non-agenda items. We have executive session for the purpose of real estate, and at this time, I undertake motion that we go into executive session for real estate. I'll make that motion there. Motion by Mr. Davis, or second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kager. All those in favor, say aye. We are adjourned for executive session. Call work session back to order and report that no action is taken in executive session. I'll undertake motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Stover, adjourned, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hart. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Periods four zero one.